We do need to appoint a pro temp clerk. So can I have a motion? Let's appoint Terry Howard as the pro temp clerk for the August 22nd, 2022. All in favor? Opposed? Hey, I need a motion for the approval of present agenda. Any questions on that? Hey, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, we're open for public comment. If one person in the audience live. Do you have anybody, Amanda, wishes to speak?
If anyone online wishes to speak, if you would just indicate by raising your hand, we will make you live.
Open for board comment. Any members wish to speak? That's true. Sign is now operational. Looks lovely. And the old desk has been, has started to hold.
Yes.
Preserving some antiquity there. And anybody else? We have our report from the student representative. What's your name again? Jenna. Hello, back. Welcome, Jenna. Do you have any report you'd like to deliver? Do you know how this works? Speak right into your mic. Is it on? You got a green light on the button?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I was actually going to ask about that because like since the school year hasn't started up yet, but I do know that like sports have started up. So that's like kind of the only thing I've like really seen so far. So.
Are you excited? Time on your summer to come. That was, yeah, very generous of you. So what are you excited about for this coming year?
Um, I mean, I guess I'm excited for like all the stuff that comes to me here, except our classes are very like spirited. So I hope that our, like, our senior year will be like, our senior group will be more involved with things. That's kind of my goal is to get like specifically the seniors more involved. So everybody else becomes more involved. Because, yeah, I think we struggle with that as a grade level.
That's excellent. Speaking of goals, it's a good, good time to mention that we are close to finishing some board goals, but we do as a board need to sort of sit and discuss. How to finalize these. We have some draft language. We have three draft, three line, three statements that are ready for consideration. We did talk about doing five. I shared this with Dawn yesterday. So she's been able to get written on a little bit. But I'd like to get that on the front door as we go. So maybe for future business agenda. Thank you, Jenna. Updates from the superintendent.
Thank you. Um, yes, the, we're really excited that the sign is powered up. Um, I do admit it'll take us a little while to learn. How to make the software look a little prettier than it does right now, but Adam and I are working on that. It'll be his primary responsibility to make sure it's updated and. We have a few more slides up there for the beginning of school. So thank you to Mr. Chuddy and our architects and the facilities committee and Saxton Sign and Andy and the maintenance department, who, if you noticed on the way in. Had the idea that we would do our own hardscape around the bottom to help not only make it a little bit nicer aesthetically, but also to protect it when we're cutting grass and stuff like that. So that was done, as you know, from my email by our own staff, and I thought they did a really nice job. It's very, very well done. So we're excited about that. We're now in the 21st century sign business. We're preparing for opening day. Opening day will be Tuesday, September 5th. The board is more than welcome to join us. We are going to provide some breakfast treats in the cafeteria, starting at 7:30 a.m. and then promptly moving to the auditorium at 8:00. I know Mr. Hutchinson is going to join us to give a little bit of a warm welcome to our staff and, and then followed by our recognition of, not only tender teachers, but our recognition of service to the district at various. Milestones like we do each year. And then a brief address of welcome from myself, and then we'll move into a two-day program that Dr. Root has taken the lead on creating. I don't know if you have any general comments about the opening two days, quite a bit of professional development, some, some required trainings, and we're really ready to hit the, hit the. Year running. We do have our annual new teacher orientation next Wednesday. Momentarily, I'm going to give you a little bit of an update of our vacancies and where we are with hiring, but anyone who's been hired from the instructional staff, we invite to come in for a full day of kind of onboarding, getting their technology. Situated, getting them to meet the principals. They do meet during lunch with the CCSTA and trying to give them some time in their spaces to be ready for opening, opening day. So we look forward to greeting all of our new, new hires, of which are composed of brand new teachers, starting their first experience in their own classroom to some veteran teachers who were joining us from, from other districts. So we're, we've got a nice mix. Coming to join us. Let's see. So just, I thought you might be curious to know that we. Update on pre-K and kindergarten numbers. Our pre-K numbers haven't changed since we, since the end of the school year, we're pretty much hovering at 48. But our, our K numbers went up by three over the last couple of weeks. So we're at 51 as an enrollment for our three sections of kindergarten classes. We have. Been busy preparing for both programs, our pre-K teachers and the on-court teachers, so physical education, art, music, and library. We're given some hours over the last few weeks to get together and start planning some of the pre-K curriculum and. Classroom stuff so that we can hit the ground running. And Mr. Chuddy's also supported the purchase of some furniture that we need, we've needed in the, in the third room. So we're, we're excited. That's going to be a, a new for us and 48 is certainly a healthy number of pre-K students. In terms of vacancies, we're pretty good on the instructional side. We, we are still looking, probably the two primary vacancies that we're looking to fill is a school psychologist position. We had a late departure of our psychologist from the high school. We went out for one. Posting and we, we had a couple of candidates that we interviewed, one of which we had offered a job to, but they decided to stay in their current district. So we could, we lost that candidate. So we were back out on Olas. Post with a posting for a school psychologist. We do have a Plan B. Mr. Brian Simon, our director of PPS, does have a Plan B in terms of taking the three school psychologists that we have and being able to service our students in three buildings until we do hire the, the next individual. If you recall. That's what we, we always had three school psychologists, but based on the increased needs of our students and their social emotional wellbeing, we added a fourth psychologist. A year or so ago. So we were hopeful that we can fill that position. I've been with. The Questar superintendents over the last couple of days and school psychologists are not in, in abundance. There's a lot of trading going on. I heard of one of our Questar districts who just picked up a school psychologist and then another district in the room found out that they just lost a school psychologist. So there's some people making some, some movements. We're also looking for. At least one E and L teacher and possibly one and a half. We have a pretty decent sized E and L population, which seems to be trending up. And those are pretty, pretty much the two hires that we're working really hard on. We have two AIS positions at MED that still need to be filled. One is a one-year literacy, literacy instruction position, and one is a math AIS position. Those are two that are vacant still. And then a number of. TAs and aides. We have several TAs and aides in each of the buildings, both MED and the high school. Right now CMS is fully, fully staffed across the board, instructional, non-instructional support. And, and at district level, we have an opening for a cleaner. So the, the maintenance department is down one individual as well, and we've posted for that. So that's kind of a quick, quick snapshot as we. Enter the next to last week in August. So not terrible, but we hope to have everyone in place for the beginning of the school year or soon thereafter. If you. Recall, we may, if we hire somebody, there's, there's a, there's legislation or there's, you know, they, they would have to give 30-day notice from the time that they. Put in their paperwork with their employer. So even if we find. An E and L teacher or a school psychologist that's working in an existing district, we may not see them till the beginning of October. So just keep that in mind. Um, and one other nice really thing, I know this is going to go back a month or two, but. Craig Simmons, our supervisor, our ex-board member and town supervisor. Stopped by last week. Mr. Chuddy was with me and presented the district with this really nice plaque. The Columbia County Board of Supervisors is recognizing our Chatham Boys Baseball Team for their state championship. They presented this back to Craig at the August 9th meeting. They had hoped to have organized a night where they could have brought the team in, but they quickly realized that one summer hit, getting in, some of the students are already probably heading back to school. That was very difficult for them to have the team at a Board of Supervisors meeting. So he felt. It was prudent to drop this off and present it to us. So I have this here and we'll turn it over to Mr. Thorson so they can put it up somewhere at the high school in a appropriate location where other people can enjoy that too. So. I think that's my report for tonight. I'll entertain any questions or concerns.
Can we drill into the note about the E and L population? You know, for, we, we've been flatlined for a bunch of years and not that it was a surprise that we were going to see an uptick there, but I'm curious what type of increase we're seeing right now.
Yeah. So I don't know if Dr. Ray, I hate to put you on the spot, and I don't know if you can help me with that. It's my, it's not an increase right now based on us. Experiencing anything like you've seen in Mahatma North Colony in terms of people being relocated. But I know we've had a few families from, was it China and some other places moving? I don't know if you can add any. It's not, it's, it's a handful, right? I mean, we're not, we're not seeing this large influx, but it's enough to. Add a sixth period stipend to our current E and L teacher at the high school to pick up a few kids. And if you recall, we, last year, we hired a former. We, the E and L position was, was filled by a former employee who was gracious enough to come back and fill that spot. She's retired and didn't feel she wanted to be commit to a full-time position again this year. She's more than willing to help us out perhaps on the part-time position. So we're still lacking that one. I don't know if you have any, anything to add to that?
Yeah. So a couple of things. I would say, I'm, I'm, I'm just going ballpark here. I think we're about four to six students so far this summer that have come in. Some are, have been homeschooled. Some are coming from other districts. So it's a little bit of a mix. Just to go off the rails just a little bit, on Friday, Stacy, our AP at the elementary school and Jeff Artist, one of our teachers, we attended a dual-language session at Questar, which was spectacular. So we're really taking some of those. Preliminary practices to, to look at Chatham. And the other, the other thing is we're working very closely with Auburn, who put on the session on Friday to, Jessa Waterhouse has been in with our district several times to meet with our leadership staff, our E and L teachers and some of our, myself and some of the school teachers to really look at how can we best provide supports for the ghettos. So we've, we've got a lot of things in, in place. The population's growing. I think it's a fantastic problem. It's not a problem. It's a fantastic thing to have. It's great for us at, at Chatham to bring in some multilingual learners.
The vacancies, K5, is that right?
Or. It's the current post or it just.
The vacancy. It's current.
Olas.
No, but which, which.
Oh.
MED.
Yeah, there's, there. There are some discussions about placement, right? So it, it, it could be middle school, high school. It is currently posted for elementary, but our current E and L teacher, you know, everyone's sort of willing to go where they're needed. Like not speaking on a line there.
Okay.
A little bit. That sounds like you sure.
Oh, no, not at all. I know I was going to mention that, um, you mentioned Jeff Artist. Jeff, for those of you who know, was a former English teacher at the high school, moved to the middle school about a year ago, and is also doing his administrative internship at MCLA and is now, he's doing his. Ed admin at MCLA and he's now in the internship phase. So he's looking, and he's been, I can see him being a very, a great asset to Lisa and the rest of the administrators as he gains some, some knowledge about administration. So he's. He's been more than willing to pitch in and help where he can.
Good luck on that hunt. These ones are never easy.
Is Jessa looking at a programmatic changes and making suggestions around that?
Really, we're really sticking to guidelines. And I mean, to be sort of frank about it, if you have a population that's not used to servicing multilingual learners, then there's, there's a conceptual shift with the leadership team, with teachers. So some of, some of that is just establishing a baseline of what we should be doing. Um, you know, so that's, that's where we're at right now, getting a, getting a shared common language.
Anything else? Okay.
Back to you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business. We have the disposal of some library materials. So R10 be resolved. Board of Education designate the list of withdrawn CHS library materials as presented by Donna Eager, librarian, to be eligible for disposal in accordance with board policy. Should be noted that this is a regular practice. This is not, you know, anything unusual or. Can I have a motion? Uh, any questions? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? We have a. Resolution for the Board of Education to approve an MOA with the Chatham Central School Teachers Association dated August 22nd, 2023. This. MOA specifically speaks to teacher liaisons, correct? Uh, grade level, six, seven, eighth grade level liaisons at the middle. Document is in Word docs.
I know, it might be worth just a quick explanation there. So. Well, it gets kind of complicated. So we have teacher leaders and teacher leaders serve various categories. And when we have a category, for instance, like say ELA that spans six through 12, but the teacher leader who is representing them is at the high school, then there's nobody physically at the middle school. And that's when we provide a liaison to that. Area. We had, got some grant money and Dr. Root had made a recommendation that Mr. Fortran. Was in agreement with to, for this one year to, and so that those content areas were properly represented at the middle school is that we would upgrade. From having a grade six, grade seven, and grade eight liaison to having a grade six, grade seven, and grade eight teacher leader. Teacher leaders take on a little greater responsibility and we felt that with the momentum that we're gaining with some of the literacy curriculum and some of the other initiatives that we have, having a teacher leader in that position rather than just liaison would best serve our district's needs. So that's where you're getting the representation, but because we needed a small contractual change to make that happen, that's why we formed an MOA.
We have. How does the expectations for the role change?
A liaison. It can, um, if you don't mind helping me at some point, but liaison. Was more of just kind of a.
Relaying information.
Yes.
So I, I just, I just want to add to this that. We are all coming together, the entire leadership team, as well as all of the teacher leaders to work on a shared problem of practice for the first half of the year. And we are going to go through a process, looking, everybody looking at chronic absenteeism. So if we, we're using this twofold, one, to learn how to come together to work towards a, a shared problem of practice through an improvement science model. If we're looking at chronic absenteeism and we're missing voice from the middle school, then that, that process kind of falls apart. So that's the, the, the main goal is that we're trying to have everybody work on a singular project. Prove the methods with it, right? Like get everybody comfortable with the methods and then we're going to scaffold that to building level initiatives. So that's, that's a sort of the, the main goal between, behind having representation at the middle school.
So is this a focus on engagement or the literacy stuff?
I'm sorry?
Is the focus for this, are they on, are they focused on engagement strategies or literacy strategies?
No. So we're going to start with chronic absenteeism. So we're just, we're going to unpack that data. We're, we're going to start from the basis of like, this is how we collect data. This is when, you know, kids, so it's really starting from basics of incorporating data and research into a problem-solving practice.
Any questions?
Oh, actually I have one question. We have volunteers.
Yes, we did post it as per the contract and we have one individual on each grade level who has expressed interest in. I think you're actually appointing them or did appoint them. Are they, yeah, yeah, I think you're, you're appointing them later on in the consensus.
Just to clarify, this is not new money. This is grant money. Not new budgetary reserve money. It's, it's grant money.
Grant money.
And we did have, we do have the MOA sunsetting. So there's no precedent being set here. We can go back to the old model should we desire to do so after this school year.
Anybody else? Uh, so can I have a motion? Uh, any, any further questions? I assume no. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Next is the motion for the disposal of some equipment. There is a list of transportation items for disposal and as well as some MED equipment for disposal. Again, similar to the library materials, this is kind of a routine process that comes to the beginning or end of every year. Are there any questions on, on what's being disposed of or? Dan? Yes, go ahead.
This is for disposal. This is nothing that's going up for. Donation or auction, correct? Some of it.
Some of it in the transportation, there's a few pieces we've looked at, we would put on auctions international. So that's how we sell. Otherwise, if it's garbage or broken, it goes to garbage.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I have a question. Um, I presume it's some of these older things don't have asset numbers associated. Presumably this is the time before spreadsheets. But I'm not actually, I'm presuming, is that largely what we're seeing here?
That's correct. Some of this stuff's 20, 25 years. I mean, it's super long, super old. We try to do an annual cleaning once a year. Sometimes we don't get to it, but then we try to put stuff on auction and, you know, because we have some, we don't have any storage, obviously, in this, uh, the facility. So we like to clean things up.
Two of the older, two of the oldest, I should say oldest, two of the older buses that we are. Getting rid of our, we have offers from two other school districts in the Crestor region. We did an analysis of a trade-in versus selling outright, and we can get a little bit more if we sell them. And we have two districts who are interested in both assets. So we're negotiating those deals as we speak.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? I never did the motion on that. Sorry. All right. Before we vote, unvote, uh, you have a motion? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Vote still standing? Anybody want to change the vote? All right. Uh, all right. So we have a motion. I need a motion to accept the consensus agenda I through K. Uh, any questions? There's quite a few appointments going on. Accepting some resignations unfortunately as well. No questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, can I have a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes from last week's meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on that? That was a brief meeting last week, just to certify the tax levy and those things. Okay. All, uh, on favor?
Hi.
Not any opposed? Very good. J3. Resolved the Board of Education approved CSE recommendations dated from February 9th all the way.
I, I think all of those are in consensus to K, right?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay. There we go. Beautiful. Thank you. Okay. So now we're down to L. Um, I need a motion to approve memorandum of understanding of disability services with Columbia Opportunities, Inc., or Head Start for the period of July 2023 through June 2024 to address the needs of preschool children who are eligible for special education in compliance with federal and state laws and regulations and authorize Director of PPS to sign the agreement. They have a motion. Uh, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
How is this engagement changed since last year? Cause our whole screening process is now different, right?
Sorry, you say that one more time.
This is for, this is for preschool children that need disability screening? Is that right?
CPSC.
Did I misunderstand?
I think for a second. So we provide CPSC screenings for those students in, in Head Start.
And this would. We're screening for them. Okay.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
May I have a motion? Motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Yep. Uh, L2. Board of Education accept the grant of $1,850 to support Fall 2023 Lemos bilingual storytime program, Spanish translation of promotional materials for library programs and collections, and the purchase of bilingual early literacy materials for our children's collection. Grant funds will be held in a trust in the miscellaneous special revenue fund for future expenditures for the Chatham Public Library. Any questions on this? Can I have a motion?
Motion?
All in favor? Any opposed? There you go. L3. Uh, the, uh, motion to prove the budget comprehensive, the budget comprehensive and revenue status reports and treasury reports, uh, that the Board of Education for the budget comprehensive status reports, treasury reports for June 2023. Any questions on these reports?
Normally these are in consensus, but I think that maybe that the, the motion was mislabeled. But, um, I do have a, a, maybe an observation, which is that the. But um, I do have a, a, maybe an observation, which is that the. Public treasurer's report is here and listed, but the executive content is not. So we don't have signatures on file and board docs, and I presume you guys have copies of these in some other archive, but. Us board members only have board docs. They're not usually blacked out like that, but.
Um, we can look into that. You're right, I think consensus should have gone right up to.
Well, I'm happy that the grant stuck out because I love.
Any further questions? Note that, uh, this study will address getting those loaded into board documents. With all, all information, pertinent information included. Uh, did we do a motion on this yet? Sorry, did we do a motion?
We did, well, her system's a little funky because, but, but we should just, I think you're up to vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Uh, and then L four, again, I, I think this goes into consensus agenda, that's okay. Uh, that, um, motion for the budget comprehensive revenues. Ever done it?
This is July.
Motion to approve.
And July. Okay, so this is the July treasurer's report. Uh, may I have a mo, any questions on July treasure? Same thing, Mike, there's reductions in there, so. Uh, can I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, here we come back to future agenda items and an opportunity for the public to speak. Are you sure you don't want to say it?
Uh, for future agenda. Do we need, do we need board timeout to go over goals? What, what's, what, in your mind, what's next step?
So I think we have to do a couple of things. In terms of. Ensuring that we have agreement. That's, uh, Dawn has not been a part of these conversations, so this is the last board. We have new board members, so I'd like to have, um, her have a chance to do the document, like I said, the ones that we've been working with, they've been sent. And then I think we do need to get together, the sooner the, the better. We do not want to have our administrative team going yet another year without articulation of some specific goals. So they can, uh, build on that. Especially because, you know, they've, they've got a lot of things. What is the theme of this year's PD? Is it supposed to be a surprise?
There was a PD plan.
There is a PD plan. We are, so there, there's two things. One. Is we are carrying over literacy and student voice, um, because we can't really fix literacy in one year. Is so, um. A- another is we have, we're taking a second track of focus on. Assessment and specifically looking at standards or proficiency based assessment. We have a team that's been working on it this summer. Um, and we'll continue the work, uh, this year. Uh, so those, those are. The initial pieces, there's going to be more to come, but I'm waiting on a couple of pieces, so I'll have to, uh. I've got some, I hopefully have some really good stuff for you, but you just might have to wait for a meeting.
I didn't get what the second proposal was, I'm sorry.
Uh, looking at assessment, so looking, really looking at, um, our report cards, the meaning that they have with families. Um, because that, because anything that we do in terms of grades is feedback and, um, we really want to. Really take a look at, at what we're doing and that feedback to our students, what feedback looks like to our families. Um, how, how we're assessing, why we're assessing, so it's a pretty comprehensive project.
Glad you asked that question, because I thought it was more building towards, uh, like data driven instruction, but it sounds more like it's communication platform as well.
Yes.
Okay, great.
With the letters reading program that we started last year, and I think that was. Twice. Will everybody be teaching it this year?
Okay, so letters, um, was two years ago, letters is more of a philosophical approach to the science based approach to reading. I just want it right. So, um, last year we did a pilot of CKLA, which is, uh. Oh my gosh, Core Knowledge Language Arts. Um, all the stuff about soup and, uh, everybody is, everybody's all in. So pre-K through five and as an added bonus, we've got some work that's happening. Um, that aligns at the middle school as well.
While we're on the subject of assessments, um, and you're thinking about and developing and, and I guess ruminating on that. Um, as a parent. We have almost no access to primary education assessment numbers. Or scores or data. And, um, there've been multiple instances where I've asked for data and not been given it. And I know that my experience is not unique.
You talking about like state assessment stuff?
The thing you're talking about are, are comprehensive assessments like eye ready or fast read.
Anything. When a teacher sends home a note and says. Hey, the kid is struggling in this area and they need to spend more time on it. As a parent, if you're actually going to engage and you're actually going to spend more than ten minutes. It's not hard to go Google the assessment, look at the scoring and put in the time, but only if you have the data. Um, so if that can somehow make it into the student information system in a way that's visible to parents, I think there'd be a huge, um, community value add. Um, and I know that's not a simple problem to solve for a number of reasons. Um, but we have very, like the report card data is almost useless from the perspective of. Understanding how you can support your child.
Yes.
Um, which I think is the only reason why there should be a report card. Um, so I'm not.
So, uh, to Matt's point, you're looking with the, sort of the revamping in the communications part of assessments. Standards and performance, you're looking at adding Lexile numbers and, and quantile numbers to the report cards?
I, I think it's too, it's premature to say that. What I hope. Um, that you will see next year out of a lot of planning this summer is. That we want to spend, uh, a large part of next year involving stakeholder groups and listening. Listening to students, listening to parents, you know, listening to our teachers and really taking some time to develop a plan. Um, and that, uh, the assessment piece is one part of many aspects of this. Really looking at next year. So I, I don't want to reveal too much, because it's like, it's not all cooked. And I don't want people to be hearing things for the first time, you know, like, like in, in a board meeting, so.
Yeah, no, but this is a good opportunity for us to, you know, remind the public, you, you know, that, that we're going to be looking for participation. Um, for the voices to be heard, so we can communicate, you know, with them in a, in a sen, in a fashion that. That speaks to needs and support. So that's good.
So I, just, you know, eh, my experience is I look at a report card, I see a P or an NP. And a comment that's been copied and pasted from other places on the same page. And then I look at that and say, oh, N, NP, maybe there's something I can do there. But then dot, 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 there's actually no way for me to take action. So I, I, that's actually an incredibly complicated problem and I'm aware that that's complicated, but it's a real one. That, um, my children are mostly out of those years, but we got a lot of kids, um, that have parents that are probably having similar experiences.
Assessment is a very, uh, hot button. Every, like, like different stakeholders, how you look at report cards, how teachers look at them, how students, like, how leaders. We have a different lens in terms of what we're looking at and what the feedback is. So. We, we were really fortunate, there was, uh. A team of six people, because we could only bring six to see Thomas Gusty speak and he's one of the renowned researchers in this field. Um, and he, he really got us going, so we have, from this group, we have. A professional learning community that's built with Questar and with some regional schools, so we have. We have some hungry, excited people in district and we have good resources supporting us, so it's very hard work. But we, I think we're on a good path because the, I say that because people are open, they're open to the discussion.
Right, and it's especially hard because some parents don't want to look at data, they just want to know their, their kid's doing good. Because they know their kid's good at home and they want to know they're good at school and it's hard to mix that on the same page with. I'd like some data, please, but.
Behavior or?
Good question. I have no idea, but everyone thinks of this differently and I think that's what Lisa's saying.
Uh, I think it's an opportunity for us to really work, you know, and we have this language for bouncing around these draft documents. About what it means to be a Chatham student and, and, and so we can align this effort with that effort as soon as we get those goals. Written, this sounds like. Fall great into.
So I know I'm giving Sal hives, I, one, one other thing that I'll just say that i- is an idea in this space. Is to think about, um, I just don't want to send people on a tizzy. But to think about developing, keeping our existing report card, but then also providing a copy of an alternate. That's right, what an alternate assessment might look like and providing them both and then. Hearing back from parents and students in terms of what one has more value in terms of feedback. So not looking to just like wipe one away. Put another one in, say like, here's a couple, here's a couple ways that we could measure this. Um, and to best point, one of the things that we're talking about is on. A potential alternate assessment, can we separate academic achievement from behavior and participation? So that we have an understanding of what is the academic level and if, and, and how is that contributing to the grade? So there's a lot of discussion and, and I'm sure that if anyone's listening, there's already many people who are like, what? So, so I don't want to take it too far, um, but we were, we're starting the conversations.
Yeah, and I, I don't care what's on the report card, because if I want to know what's going on with a child, I'd like to be able to look at the student information system. And see what's actually current, rather than the last report card, which is from data from, you know. Fifteen weeks ago or something like that. If you're actually trying to push your kid upstairs steps, you need to know what's going on now.
And, and I believe we have a policy about when to enter grades and do a parent into school tool for parent portal.
That stuff's done pretty, pretty well, but when it, when it comes to assessments, actually, so I. Uh, on the, in the secondary, uh, um, there's a lot of depth to the data. It's available in the student information system, but not on the primary outside as a parent.
So a, a couple of years ago, we did a, I worked with a group, we did a, um, standards based report card. In retrospect, this is only four or five years ago, maybe six. In retrospect, I think that we were lacking the language of MTSS. Uh, which would get to the socio emotional dynamics, the behavioral components, uh, and even some. Some language from the teachers that did AIS or RTI interventions. Uh, so also, all things to consider, uh, as we put together, you know, a document that is also not overwhelming. We can't, can't send phone books home to everybody, uh, four times a year, but. But yeah, no, it's, it's good work, it's challenging. Fun times. Alright, uh, so we, so future agenda items, Matt, repeaters again.
The question was, do we need to set aside time and I think. For board goals, but I think that Dawn's gonna, uh, she's gonna spend her time catching up and then we're gonna schedule time.
Yeah, and I'm gonna follow up with her later on this week to see, um, where she's at with that and then. I'm gonna follow up with her next week. To see where she's at with that and then, um, maybe, maybe we can schedule a, a workshop sometime in September. Again, I think, you know, we really want to do our folks' favor, put them in the, you know, I think our responsibility is to put them in the best position to be successful. And without those goals, I think that, you know, we're leaving too many guesses, so.
Okay. One more item here. I'm sure that we're late on, because I, I kicked it down the roadmap and it landed in your lap. The Super Ebell. Final probably is. Did we actually score that? Yeah.
You guys, you guys never.
So. I guess. Well, I guess the question is.
Two board members.
We've done plenty of feedback. But at some, at some point, I think Sal would like a score he can stick in a holder.
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Okay. Uh, maybe, maybe it's not urgent.
It's a future agenda and I'll take a look at it and see where we left off and then, um. What's that?
Do you have a revised mission statement yet?
No, I think that was kind of, that came out of our discussions around board goals, but we didn't set out to do a mission statement, but I think we ended up. With the curiosity and desire to do one, so I, I almost think that that routine, that. That has to be attached to our board goal, because that's how, that was the impetus for the discussion of the goal. So again, that, I think workshop's gonna be important. And we'll figure that out. Get out the information you guys to the board as soon as possible. Alright, uh, we did do a second public comment, yep. Now we just have, uh, the one individual and give him a second if he wants to. Join us. Thank you for joining us. Okay, we will, uh, we do have the anticipation of an executive session, so I would need a motion to go into executive session. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, do we see the need to come back to a public session afterwards?
Not this evening.
Okay, so, um, that adjourns the meeting with a motion, please.
Now, eh, we have, you have to do. You have to appoint a district clerk.
Oh, that before the, the.
And then we don't go into adjournment, that's at the end of the executive session.
Oh, okay, alright, so, uh, motion to appoint, uh, Dr. D'Angelo as District Clerk pro temp. For the executive session.
Motion?
All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Thank you, folks. That's it, Jim.
Ken, thank you.